We working now? Is the microphone working?
Yes, sir.
Ah, great. All right. Folks, I'm calling this to order. The meeting of the Texas Board of Criminal Justice Business and Financial Operations Committee is called to order in accordance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, the Open Meetings Act. A quorum of the committee is present, and the meeting is now declared open. It is 116. There we go. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Are there any amendments or objections to the proposed minutes as presented? Hearing none, the minutes as presented on the agenda will stand as approved. Next item on the agenda is a report from the Facilities Division Director, Ron Hudson, on the status of board-approved projects. Mr. Hudson, please join us at the podium, and if you're ready, please begin.
All right, good afternoon, Mr. Welles, Chairman Nichols, Vice Chair Johnson, Mr. Collier, members. I would like to provide an update on the status of board-approved projects. Item number one is the Michael Unit Roofing Project. This project is 54%. Contractor continues to work on 10 Building, which is the infirmary, installing a roof debris barrier over the medical area. Additionally, contractor moved to 4 Building and is working on 4E and 4F areas, which is inmate housing areas. Item number two is the Mofford Unit Roofing Project. This project is complete. The board-approved program cost of this project was $10,329,100, and the estimated closeout cost is $8,568,490. That is $1,760,610, or 17% under program cost. Item number three is the Gesture 3 Unit Roofing Project. This project is 95%. Contractor is finalizing detail work, and pre-final inspection is pending. Item number four is the Stringfelling Unit Replace Roofs Multiple Locations. This project is 4%. Contractor has ordered roofing material and mobilizing at the unit. Item number five is the Holiday Unit Design Only Construct New Training Facility. This design-only project is 90%. Item number six is the Holiday Unit Construct New Training Facility. This project is 1%. The contractor is continuing to work with the design firm and TDCJ on final construction documents. Contractor will begin mobilizing next week to start site preparation work. Also, we are scheduling a groundbreaking ceremony for sometime in January. Item number seven is the Lionel Unit Design Only Project Structural Repairs Inmate Housing, J1 through J4 dorms. This design-only project is 50%. Second technical review has been completed. Item number eight is the Ferguson Unit Project to Construct Water Treatment Plant. This project is 12%. Preparatory site work is ongoing, and materials have begun to arrive. Item number nine is the Terrell Unit Project Refurbish Water Tower Water Treatment Plant. This project is 5%. Contractor has ordered materials, and the lead time is eight to 10 weeks. Items 10 and 11 are the Conley Unit Project to Replace Plumbing Controls. The notice to proceed has been issued for both these projects. Item number 11 is the Ellis Unit Install Fire Alarm System Project. This project is 8%. Contractor is working in the BOQ and the trustee camp areas. Item number 13 is the Ferguson Unit Install Fire Alarm System Project. This project is 10%. Again, contractor is working in the BOQ and the trustee camp areas. Item number 14 is the Johnston Unit Project to Install Emergency Power Multiple Locations. This project is 94%. All four generators are functional, and Texas Creational Industries is installing the fencing around the generators. Pre-final inspection is pending. Item number 15 is the Beto Unit Project to Install HVAC in ABC and D Housing. This design-only project remains at 40%. Second technical review is ongoing. Item number 16 is the McConnell Unit Project to Install HVAC in Inmate Housing Design Only. The contract award is pending. Item number 17 is the Michael Unit Project Install HVAC Efficiency Upgrades in 12 Building Inmate Housing. This project is at 12%. Contractor is mobilizing, lay-down yard is being built, and material has been ordered. Item number 18 is the Clements Unit Project to Replace Chiller Systems 1, 2, and 3 in multiple locations. This project is 70%. All piping installation work inside the chiller room is completed. Five chiller pumps have been mounted, system passed hydro testing, and contractor is currently insulating the piping. Item number 19 is the Michael Unit Replace Clarifier Wastewater Treatment Plant. This project remains at 15%. The clarifier has been ordered, and estimated delivery is in January of 2025. Contractor will mobilize at this point. We have been getting pictures of the clarifier while it's being manufactured at the company. Item number 20 is the Ramsay Unit Replace Region 3 Training and Academy Buildings. This project is 87%. Interior build-out continues. Center Point is actively working onsite to complete main power installation. Item number 21 is the All Red Unit Project Install Monitor Pulse Fence Detection Systems. This project is 60%. Trenching and installation of conduit is completed. Fiber cable installation is ongoing. 12 of the 20 zones have electronic controllers installed. Once this is complete, the contractor will install wire on the inner perimeter fence. Item number 22 is the McConnell Unit Project to Install Monitor Pulse Fence Detection Systems Perimeter. This project is 3%. Material has began to arrive at the unit. Item number 23 is the Robertson Unit Project to Install Monitor Pulse Fence Detection Systems. This project is 80%. Preparatory work is complete, and the contractor is now installing the pulse wiring to the inner perimeter fence. The next two projects, 24 and 25, are the Wainwright Unit Project to Replace Agricultural Buildings. Both of these remain at 5%. Demolition on the old ag building and site preparation is completed. Engineering is reviewing the final building design. Once final design is approved, contractor will begin mobilizing. This concludes my project status updates. I will stand by for any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from the board?
General, if I might. So, on number six, the new training facility, there will be a groundbreaking in January, you say?
We're looking at a schedule now, trying to set a date.
Okay.
Right now. So, once that date is confirmed, we'll get that out.
Yeah, just keep, because I'm sure that maybe one or more of the board members will want to attend to that.
As soon as we finalize that date, we're going to meet, I believe, next week, and we're going to finalize a date.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Your last question.
Go ahead.
What do you mean by initiation date?
On which number was that?
Any of them.
Oh, initiation date? Okay. That was put on there on the remarks section of this here. I believe the board had asked when the initiation date was set on these projects. So, I added that on there. So, what that means is, is when we take that to what they call the facilities review board, when we decide we're going to move forward with a project, that's the date that was taken to the facilities review board for us to bring that on to the next step, is what that means.
Do you have a date, actually, does, or like whoever, the might be, puts in a request to build a request group?
When is that initiated? That's what I thought you meant, but that's not what you meant.
That's not what I meant on here. What we put on here was the actual, when we took it to the FRB. Now, what you're talking about is when we initiated the NWR, which is a major work request. We had that in the column, but that might have been something that was designed years ago, and then when we get funding, enough funding to move those projects forward because it's designed complete, then we would move forward. But that design might sit on the shelf two, three, four years, just depending on funding. So, if that's the date you're looking for, we can actually go back and change that date.
I was looking saying when it actually started, before it got to the board, so.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Thank you, Ron.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions? Okay, I believe you have a couple more items for us.
Okay, the first project for consideration is to renovate the ice house at the Beto Unit. The work will consist of demolition of current equipment, electrical and plumbing, installation of new flooring, electrical and plumbing, and three new block ice machines, and refurbishment of the existing ice storage. This will result in safer operations and will assist in providing ice for the agency. One proposal was received for this project in August of 2024. If approved, the work will be performed by Kingham, Dalton, Wilson, or KDW LTD at Anacodotes, Texas. This is the first project for KDW LTD with TDCJ. However, they do have 20-plus years of experience. There is a one-year warranty for parts and labor. The construction duration of this project is 220 days. The actual bid on this was $2,258,021. Total estimated program cost is $3,42,000. I pause for any questions.
Any questions?
So, tell us a little bit about the ice machines. This is something probably a little bit bigger, grander in style than the 7-Eleven ice machine.
You're, that is.
Do you know how many ice cubes we're getting in?
Yes, ma'am. That's a great question.
Probably knows.
Yes, ma'am. The current system is what we call an ammonia system. It is very outdated, and it's been down for about two years. So, the type of system we're going to put in there now is more of a conventional freon type system. The old system would produce big 300-pound blocks that was very, you know, just very heavy to work with. We'd have to put them on pallets and just, you know, move them in and out of the units. This new ice machine is actually going to be a block of ice of approximately 24 inches by 8 inches by 4 inches will be a block. You can actually take that block of ice and set down inside of an igloo cooler, which is going to make it very easy on the units to be able to deal with that block of ice. We'll be able to produce, with those three ice machines, about 600 blocks a day. So, if you produce 600 blocks a day, seven days a week, that's about 4,200 blocks per week. We're thinking we're going to be able to put out about two truckloads, two truckloads per week of ice. That's 18-wheeler loads of ice per week, which is really going to help the agency, really help the units, you know, with their ice, in being able to provide ice. Right now, what they're having to do, they're having to rely on their ice machines in the kitchen, and then also take containers and also freeze those within their freezers. So, what's going to do is that's going to alleviate a lot of that wear and tear on our freezer space, in our freezers, by that water going up in the evaporators. So, like, this is really going to help by putting this ice machine in and assisting the agency with ice. Yes, okay.
And does it just serve us, or serve the interests of this particular unit? Or is that a situation where ice is going to get shipped to other units as well?
Ice will get shipped out strategically across the whole state, to all units.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. You have another item?
Yes. All right, the next project for consideration is to install HVAC at the Goodman Unit. The work will consist of installation of concrete pads for equipment, nine packaged AC units, new ductwork for airflow, and electrical conduit and wiring to serve new equipment. Existing backup power will be utilized by adding new electrical panels fed from present emergency panels. Four proposals were received for this project in August of 2024. If approved, the work will be performed by Decker Mechanical, Inc. at Cedar Hill, Texas. This is the fourth project for Decker Mechanical, Inc. with TDCJ, and they do have over 40 years of experience. The construction duration of this project is 180 days. There is a standard one-year manufacturing and installation warranty. This project will add approximately 117, 117.5 tons of direct expansion cooling and provide 612 AC beds. Actual bid for this project was $1,351,126. The total estimated program cost is $2 million. I pause for any questions.
So, Ron, can I go back to the ice cubes?
Yes, ma'am.
What, so what, how do we, we transport these in trucks, obviously, and they're, we have a lot of trucks able to take these cubes and take them, blocks, take them all over the state? Would you have any idea about what's involved with the, I mean, it's not refrigerated, it's, how's that done, transportation-wise?
You know, within our ice house, we'll have an ice storage facility within that ice house. They will be actually put on pallets. There'll be so many blocks that goes on a pallet. We'll be able to get 20 pallets on a truck, and then those will be strapped down. Those will actually be sent either directly to the units, or we'll send those to the warehouses, and then they can send one, two, or three pallets, whatever they can get on a truck, because we do have two big warehouses across the state. We have one in Snyder that has a freezer, and we also have one here in Huntsville that has a freezer. So, we can actually store that ice in those warehouses too, and they can actually ship those out of the warehouses also.
The trucks they go into are also refrigerated.
They're all refrigerated. So, we can turn those down to like zero on those refrigerator trucks.
Fats worried about how fast we're going to have to drive if we.
No, those are going to be on reefers. So, yes, yes, we have reefers. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you for your reports, Ms. Hudson. And lastly, the next two items on the agenda are manufacturing, agribusiness, and logistics, the Mal division reports, which will be presented by Mal Division Director Bill Lewis. Mr. Lewis, I see you're at the podium. Please proceed.
Good morning, Chairman Nichols. Morning, Chairman Nichols, Mr. Collier, and members. Today, we have two items for consideration during a regular session of the Texas Board of Criminal Justice. We recommend that the board approve these items. The first one is Hidalgo County Drainage District Number One Requested Drainage Ditch Easement on Approximately 1.9 Acres to Improve Drainage in Hidalgo County Drainage District Number One. The above-ground open drainage ditch is part of a project to improve damage, and that'll be down where Segovia Lopez is in South Texas. If you'll direct your attention to the screen, the requested acreage is located in northwest portion of the property, where it's shot it out. This will be a 30-year term, and compensation will be at $19,500. The Hidalgo County Drainage District indicates this project will improve the existing regional storm water damage system in Hidalgo and Willacy Counties. This project is known as Raymondville Drain Project. Its purpose is to widen selected water channels and ditches along the existing Raymondville drain, as well as to evaluate construction of new drainage systems and elements. This is the reason for the proposal for the new drainage ditch. I'd like to point out that this easement includes language requiring indemnification for the grantor's responsibility, the Most Favored Nations Clause, and compensation was negotiated at the current geographical appraisal values in Willacy County. I stand available for any question.
Are there any questions? No questions, please proceed with your next item.
Yes, sir. The second item for consideration is Encore Electric Delivery Company. DM and T. DM and TDCJ, we have requested an easement to benefit TDCJ, the Beto unit and other units in the Tennessee Colony area, the other prison properties that share the land. The company requests 0.3 acres of land to install a new electric power station with new power lines. The project is to enhance existing power station and upgrade it with a new station and lines for the security of electrical power resources necessary to keep the prison operations and without interruptions. Again, as noted on the screen by the red marker, the requested acreage is located on the southwest portion of the property. Encore Electric Delivery is not offering compensation because the extension benefits not only the Beto unit but all the other facilities and TDCJ properties located in that area. I'd like to point out that this easement includes language requiring indemnification as a grantor's responsibility. I stand available for any question.
Just real quick, I've noticed on the, on the overhead that we're looking at, there appear to be some housing kind of in that area. Mr. Lewis?
Yes, sir.
So you see that, so I take it that whatever we're doing, we've made sure that that, the use of that portion of the property for an electrical substation is not, won't interfere with the use of that?
We have. We're going to, Encore will do the initial substation repairs, implementation on that property. And then once they get through with their repairs, Mr. Hudson and his group will be coming in behind them to update our substructure, transformers, lines, to make sure that we can be ready for all of that. At some point, there's two of those facilities that are on, that were, have targeted for air conditioning. So we're trying to make sure that we got our, all of our structure ready to go when we take that load on. But yes, sir, we have cleared with all of that.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
Any other questions? I guess not. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Appreciate your reports.
Thank you.
And there being no further business, the Texas Board of Criminal Justice Business and Financial Operations Committee is now adjourned. Time is 1:34.
There we go.
The meeting of the Texas Board of Criminal Justice Healthcare Committee is called to order in accordance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, the Open Meetings Act. A quorum of the committee is present, and the meeting is now declared open. It is 1:35 PM. The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Are there any amendments or objections to the proposed minutes as presented? Hearing none, the minutes as presented on the agenda will stand approved. Our next item on the agenda is a presentation from the presiding chair of the Correctional Managed Healthcare Committee, Dr. Robert Greenberg. Thank you for joining us today, Dr. Greenberg. If you're ready, you may begin.
Yep, thank, thank you, sir. I appreciate the opportunity to come here. I will go off of the presentation that you see there. I met with you all a couple of years ago, I think, in Galveston. But as a reminder, I'm an emergency physician, so my evening, night, and weekend job is as an emergency physician. But I'm very proud to be the chair of this committee, to work with the three organizations you see down there to provide correctional managed healthcare, the UTMB, Texas Tech, and TDCJ. As I go through this presentation, if you have any questions, feel free to ask them, and I will immediately turn to Dr. L., who can answer them. Because she is really the, the heart, soul, and brains of TDC correctional managed healthcare. She is incredible, and she gets a lot of credit for everything that's done. So we'll go ahead and jump on in here. So as a quick overview and background, there has always been attempts and efforts to make sure that we minimize transportation of inmates as much as possible. But as y'all all know, unfortunately, there was an event a couple of years ago where a inmate being taken for medical care escaped from a bus, unfortunately killed people, and it was a tragedy. So once again, correctional managed healthcare was asked to end TDCJ to see if we cannot decrease transports even more. So what follows are those, those efforts. So as a reminder, UTMB and Texas Tech, it's the medical schools and the healthcare providers provide correctional managed healthcare to the inmates. Approximately 80% of that is done by UTMB. All of the female healthcare is done by UTMB, the cancer care, and I think the transplant care. And again, Dr. L. will correct me if I'm wrong. And you can see how the state is divided there and the number of facilities included. So again, TDCJ has done telehealth, telemedicine for decades. But the technology gets better, the acceptance of the technology gets better, and the acceptance by society for doing healthcare has gotten better. But you can see over the last couple of years, and if you'll click through a few, I've circled some of the areas where there has been a significant increase in the number of telehealth visits in the different areas. The top is UTMB. The bottom part there is Texas Tech. And you can see that there's been an increase in mental health, telehealth visits, specialty care, and then primary care, especially in the Texas Tech sector. So not only are we already doing telehealth, we're increasing the amount that's being done. If you take the, click one more time. If you take the, the sum of all of that, that's almost 200,000 encounters, 200,000 visits that are being done by telehealth through correctional managed healthcare, and that's huge. I can't tell you that every one of those would have been an in-person visit, but every one of those can help you from having to have an in-person visit because they're going to intervene in the care of the patient. And just like with my job, we try to avoid people getting sicker. That's exactly what this does. It's a huge effort.
May I ask, do we, do we keep track of the people that we see by telehealth that end up having to be referred to someone else that is not resolved? Do we, is the majority of our issues resolved?
You're going to watch me turn, right?
Go ahead and turn.
I'm not sure the right way to answer that, Dr. L., and would you like? You don't want to join me, do you? Because I know how you. I, I actually don't, don't know.
Judge Francis, yes, we, we do keep track, and we actually have quarterly meetings with both universities. And when we review the telehealth data, part of the discussion is the avoidance of, you know, say someone had to go down four times by using the telehealth intervention, they may only have to go down two. So we keep track of that.
See, I knew that was going to work out well for me, so. Any other questions on telehealth? I'm going to switch now to some where we send providers to where the inmates, the patients are. So again, UTMB provides all of the care for the females, pregnant and not pregnant. And under that, those hospice, under that, most of the care is the females are in the, in Gatesville at the Crane Unit, and the, all the pregnant patients are Carroll Young. So every, go to the next slide, please. Every other Wednesday, essentially, a faculty physician from UTMB and two residents, two OB/GYN residents, will go to alternating between Gatesville and the Carroll Young Unit to provide gynecology care at Gatesville and Carroll Young. And there, they're, again, once again, avoiding transport for just a, for a clinic visit, also doing pre-op visits for surgery that will be done in Galveston. And then the next slide. And there are some procedures done at Carroll Young, elite procedure, which does take, it takes equipment, takes expertise. And again, being able to do that in a clinic setting is, is, is very good. And then, under OB for the pregnant patients, that, all of that is provided at Carroll Young as well. That is primarily provided by APP, a nurse practitioner, to provide the obstetric care. The same thing that happens in the free world, so it's the same. Like everything else with correctional managed healthcare, it's standard of care medicine. So it's the same thing that's being provided, 10 to 20 patients per clinic. All right. Any questions on that one? I'm going to, and I know I'm jumping quick and all of that, but there's a lot, there is a lot of information in here, and I don't want to overwhelm, and I also don't want to take your whole afternoon. Next is optometry services, which is provided both by UTMB and Texas Tech. And I guess, yeah, y'all have the long one. Y'all have the 60-slide one there. So the, where, I'm not going through 60 slides, just so you know. Both UTMB and Texas Tech provide vision care. And you can see the numbers there, going from FY23 through to FY25. I annualized that number. So it's gone from 11,000 a year to 19,000 a year. So great service to the inmates as well as decreasing transports. Another, another very different and unique service that's being provided is there is actually an emergency room at the Estelle unit. And the, that emergency department provides care for inmates physically at Estelle and telehealth to those other units you see. And if those patients need to be patients, inmates, I'm going to use those words interchangeably. If they need to be transported, they still go to the Estelle unit if they can be cared for there. So once again, avoiding transport to the hospital. And since I'm an emergency physician, I can tell you, and you know, having an inmate in an emergency department is disruptive in many ways, and the security is not, nobody's really comfortable with the security because the guards don't have control, right? And we're not, we're not made to be that secure. So anytime you can avoid, especially going to an emergency department, it's, as I say, it's better for everybody. Next slide will show you the volume. This just started back in February of '23, and you can see that the volume is going up. It's the, this fiscal year-to-date where it's 670, and I annualized that out to around 2,500. I didn't put it on the slide. So again, the number of inmates being cared for continues to increase, and therefore, transports decrease. And I've been to that unit when I toured through the Huntsville units recently. I've been to that emergency department. It's an emergency department. I could work there. All right. Then at the other end of the spectrum, so emergency department is the acute care for patients who come back after hospitalization and need rehabilitation care. We can do mobile therapy, again, at the unit. And once again, you can see the increase in the number of inmates that are being taken care of, the increase in the number of visits. And actually, the more intensive rehab is for someone who's been hospitalized, the quicker they get better and the, they become much more functional. So whether this is more, even more inmates or more visits to the same inmate, this is, this is incredible care. This is a list of the multiple specialties that are setting up onsite clinics through UTMB. And you can see the, the specialties and the units where they're at. And trying to get in to see an orthopedist or a neurologist, that's hard in the free world. So having somebody, having this base at your unit is, is, again, it's a great service. All right, I think they're, trying to see if they're catching up. You got it? All right. So nerve conduction studies, this is a little bit of a niche. So nerve conduction studies are done for a lot of different neurologic problems, carpal tunnel syndrome, muscle weakness, those kind of things. It takes pretty delicate equipment. It takes specialized techs to do it, and there's not a lot of them around. So it's a very difficult test to get and to move around. But you can see that they, we're now doing those across the different sites. And for a lot of the conditions that are being evaluated, you can't do much until you get the nerve conduction study. So having this available at the units, again, improves their care and speeds up the care and increases safety. On the next two slides, you can see the tattoo removal that is being done at the units. So you have fiscal year '24 on the first slide, fiscal year '25 on the next slide. So just, just for your information that those are being done, the number of inmates who had tattoos removed and the number of tattoos removed are listed on there. And again, that those numbers continue to increase. And it's good for their health, and it's good for their safety, and it's good for their rehab.
But when you remove the tattoos, you still leave a mark, don't you?
There, there are marks. You're going to, you're going to have a scar for most of them. But it no longer identifies you as being part of the gang. So you can get out of a lifestyle that you were stuck in because you have a tattoo on you. And others can speak more to that kind of, that's its own little social niche. But once you have that tattoo, you are expected to behave a certain way, good or bad. And, but getting, being able to get rid of the tattoo gets you out of that. But it's not without its own dangers as well. And Mr. Collier?
Judge, I was just going to say, for employment purposes, it makes a significant difference for a lot of them, especially those inmates that have facial tattoos. Being able, it makes them much more employable once they get out. So part of their reentry can be enhanced by doing that as well.
And we have, we have machines, well, the ability to do this at O'Daniel and Estelle. Do we have plans to expand? And this might be more of a question for Mr. Collier or Dr. L.
Remember, hard questions.
So we actually have three clinics. The third clinic is that Hospital Galveston. Clinic is run by plastic surgery. So plastic surgery is sort of our clinical specialty consultant in this program. So a lot of the facial tattoos go to the Hospital Galveston Clinic for plastic surgeons to remove them in case they need other procedures, you know, for cosmetic reasons so their face can look good. And, you know, for reentry purposes, particularly for the females, it's just life-changing for them. So we have three clinics. We put the, one at the Estelle unit because it was close to the grad program, the gang renunciation and disassociation that's at Ellis. And then we have the one at O'Daniel for our females. And then the really hard cases, plastics wants to see them themselves, and so they go down to Hospital Galveston.
So will you be able to, can someone from the other unit actually come and just to Estelle or the other, other unit?
Yes. Yes, this is actually, Mr. Collier always says there's no silos in TDCJ. So this is a multi-divisional effort. So actually, reentry and program services is the lead division. They sort of get us the patient group. And then health services and correctional managed healthcare does, does the actual work. So if there are inmates on other units, we bring them in just like we would bring them into our other units for regional care. They stay in transient, they get the procedure done, and then they go back to their unit.
Right. All right, and then, so again, standard of care medicine, just like you would get anywhere else. Women need to get mammograms on a regular basis, depending upon their risk. We have a mobile mammography unit that goes to the Crane Unit, as well as there are some, some imaging done in Gatesville. And I understand the reason the numbers are down a little bit in '24 was there were some equipment issues in Gatesville last fiscal year. That apparently is better now. But we continue to do mammograms, again, without having to transport the, the patients to somewhere besides where they're at. And then this is, this is something that will probably increase over time. So mobile ultrasounds, ultrasounds are now done for a lot more conditions than they used to be. The equipment has gotten incredibly better. When I started 30 years ago, and probably when Dr. Burrow started, ultrasound, somebody would show you something on ultrasound, and you would finally just agree that you can see it because you couldn't really figure it out. It looked like snow. Nowadays, you look at an ultrasound and you can. Yeah, well, yeah. That was a long time ago, so. But the, nowadays, the ultrasounds, the image quality is incredible. It is very good. Anybody can kind of look at it and go, oh, yeah, that's a body part. The technology has gotten better. The technology has gotten more durable. So doing mobile ultrasounds really, it's now, and it will be more of a future. And it, you can, the tech can go in there with their ultrasound equipment, do some advanced imaging, and you can really get a lot of information out of that. And, and it's not near as expensive as a CAT scan or an MRI scan or anything like that. So I do think it's going to, we're going to see increased use. Additionally, Texas Tech has radiology services. For the units that don't have X-ray equipment, they have a contract for mobile imaging. And then they do have advanced imaging services at their regional medical facility at the Monford Center, where they can do all of the advanced imaging. And then this, this just shows a lot of the other services done through Texas Tech. And then this, this just shows a lot of the other services done through Texas Tech Radiology Services. And again, you can see the, the numbers for the different modalities that are done. And again, this equipment is, is expensive, hard to come through, hard to get techs to do. So, having the availability of this is a, is a true benefit. UTMB has a mobile MRI. I actually didn't even know about this till, till this got put together. So, but UTMB has a mobile MRI and you can see it's at, started at Estelle and it's expanding in the future. And again, you can see the number of MRIs that are being done. And then I think this is almost the last slide. So, this is, this is an eye chart, just so when you start to look at it. But this shows all of the different tele, specialty clinics that will do telemedicine evaluation for patients, when they're scheduled and who, who they can reach out to. So, again, this kind of goes back to the first slide when we talked about telehealth and that being a great way to take care of patients. It's now much more accepted by everyone. And these are all the different specialties that are involved through UTMB. And then the, the next and last slide, I believe it is, shows what the future is for UTMB as far as what's being planned now. So, really, to wrap it up, telehealth and trying to decrease transports has always been a priority. An unfortunate event increased it. Another unfortunate event called COVID actually gave us a lot of new technology and a new acceptance of that technology out of need. So, we are at a point where we can continue to provide remote care and decrease transports. There will always be, we'll always have to have transports, but the more we can decrease them, the better. So, I'll ask if there are any questions for Dr. L.
I, I would, Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask a question. I'm focused on that. If you can go back to the slide before, that last slide, just get a little more detail. Because my question to you was, first of all, I want to say thank you, Dr. Greenberg, for the presentation and also for your leadership on the Correctional Managed Healthcare Committee.
Thank you, sir.
That committee is essential to achieving the mission, overall mission, that every person in the state should be proud of in terms of making sure, as you said so aptly in your comments, that the standard of care in the system, TDCJ system, is gonna mirror the standard of care in the free world. And, and we can't, can't achieve that mission without the good work of the, of the committee, the Correctional Managed Healthcare Committee, to make sure that that's being done. Because we all know, one of the, the things that the legislature recently, through the Sunset Advisory Commission, recognized, is that one of the key functions of that committee is to develop statewide policies for the delivery of correctional healthcare, which is what we're talking about today in terms of how that healthcare gets delivered. So, first of all, thank you. But I do want to go back to this slide here, the one that's got, if you can get that highlighted, the, the one with, no, the one with the four bullets. There you go. It's okay. Because the question I was gonna ask you, with this premise, which is that absolutely by reducing transports, you're helping the pub, preserve public safety through the security risks. But also, as you know, Dr. Greenberg, by reducing transport for medical reasons, you're also helping with the overall resource that we have available to staff our facilities. Because, as you aptly said, it's, it's, it's the burden of having someone go out in the free world to receive care. It's the security risk and security needs associated with that, but also it's the security associated with transport. And for every, every time we do a transport and have to dedicate three correctional officers to moving a, a, one or more of our, members of our population, that's a huge resource drain. And so, that, that's the lead up to my question. We'll get to the next slide, which is, can you kind of help illustrate for us what, some more opportunities? So, over and above all the great work that's being done right now in terms of the provision of telehealth, as well as the provision of medical services at the units, where are the opportunities for growth, not only in terms of adding units to existing programs, but also new types of healthcare delivery that you believe could be accomplished through one of these means?
Yeah, I wish I could answer that as an expert, but I have to tell you, Texas Tech and UTMB and Texas Department of Criminal Justice, they have that expertise, that operational expertise.
Right.
And I would, as, I say it jokingly, but I absolutely defer to Dr. L, where those opportunities would be. I don't have, you know, a good insight into the details. But I would, I mean, if there's a technology and a way to do it, we should investigate that. Cost is always gonna be an issue, unfortunately, with anything, anything and especially anything with medical care. But where the true opportunities are right now, I would defer to, to Dr. L.
Okay. But just on your slide alone, you've got cardiology, which I didn't see in the early, is cardiology, and I'm happy to hear from you, Dr. Greenberg or Dr. L, is cardiology something that we're currently providing either on-unit services or through telehealth? Is, or is that an expansion?
That slide before this one, these are telemedicine specialty clinics that we have added since the Gonzalo escape. So, these are on top of the already established multitude of telemedicine. Cardiology telemedicine is one of our largest clinics currently.
Okay.
Right? So, these other services, we've actually gone to Galveston and engaged with the chairs of these various departments and asked them, would you consider starting up a telemedicine effort to help us reduce inmate transportation? And this is actually the result of that. And I have, we have with us today Marjorie Cisneros. She's the administrator of a Hospital Galveston and most, Marge, stand up, please.
Please stand up.
Most of these efforts, she has been largely responsible for. So, I want her to get credit for that. Thanks, Marge.
Thank you for your efforts.
The other areas that we're looking at, we look at the high-volume transports. As you know, medical transports is a, is a huge part of the volume. Dialysis, for example, all of our inmates, Estelle has over two hundred inmates on dialysis. They have shunts and catheters. The Monford unit also has about thirty to forty inmates on hemodialysis. And then we have a small number at Carroll Young. One of the things that we have been successful in doing is reaching out to the nephrology, nephrology department at Hospital Galveston and actually having the nephrologists come on-site to help us care for the shunts and catheters versus transporting them down. Now, Texas Tech has a vendor for Senias and so we don't have that same relationship. But we're constantly looking for opportunities to engage the specialists and subspecialists to come onto our units, to work with CID and, you know, finding space so that we can do more procedures at the unit level. We also contracted with some interventional radiologists to come on-site to do some procedures. And so, that stops travel as well. And actually, me and Marge, we have a meeting next week to talk about another emergency department in the Palestine area. That's a high volume of transports over to Palestine Regional. And we think we'll have an opportunity to greatly reduce some of that traffic by creating an emergency department at the Beto unit. So, we got a lot we're thinking about.
You do. And Dr. L, we, as always, we appreciate your leadership on this issue and your, and your, your work with the committee, with the Correctional Managed Healthcare Committee, to make sure that you're taking advantage of every opportunity we can on the areas that Dr. Greenberg discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. And really, our university partners, they have done really yeoman's work in, in reducing medical transports significantly, probably thirty to forty percent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. L, don't leave because you probably need to answer this question.
Yeah.
Will you expand a little bit on these estimated services, if you go to the next slide, that you have coming at Crane and Young next year in January twenty twenty-five?
So, that's uro-gynecology. So, it involves urology, women that have, you know, urologic issues, maybe with their bladder from childbirth, et cetera. All of those kinds of visits in the past were considered specialist visits and all of those women had to go to Galveston. We were able to work with GYN in doing the lead procedures, which is, you know, you have precancerous cells in your cervix. And so, before, all of those women had to go to Galveston to get the laser treatment. Now, they're doing those on-site at Carroll Young. And so, some of the issues related to the bladder and pelvis and all that, we're gonna, we're, we're in talks now with the GYN urology specialists to come and start seeing our patients on the units and then deciding what procedures they could do there.
Really glad to see that because I know there's been a specific interest in reducing transport for female inmates from the last legislature. We just had a big report due on that. So, I think this is a great addition as well as all that you've done for women's care.
We're very proud of our female healthcare services. We even have MD Anderson in partnership with us that are actually seeing our patients for cancer care. I mean, it's this, you know, top-notch, state-of-the-art. I think our female healthcare programs is one of the most strongest programs that we have. And the partnership with UTMB and, and, and OB-GYN down there has been excellent over the years.
Thank you so much.
Any more questions from the board? Dr. Greenberg, appreciate the work that Dr. Lindcom, you do, the two universities. As she said, it's a yeoman's work. This is amazing. And to, for this to happen in the timeframe that it's happened, it doesn't happen that quick in the free world.
No, it does not.
And not to this level. And you and I both practice medicine in, in the free world. This is amazing. And the numbers that, that you guys have done and really providing state-of-the-art healthcare. And when it was charged to TDCJ to decrease transportation, this group really took the bull by the horns. So, and excellent healthcare. A lot of the specialties you mentioned, like neurology and stuff, it can take three months, four months, five months or six months in the free world to get people in. So, this is just phenomenal. Hats off to everyone involved.
I agree. They've done an incredible job and always maintain the standard of care, the high-level care that's being provided. They did not sacrifice healthcare for this.
Yes, it's amazing. There being no further business, the Texas Board of Criminal Justice Healthcare Committee is now adjourned. It's two oh four PM.
The meeting of the Texas Board of Criminal Justice Correctional Institutions Committee is called to order in accordance with the chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code, the Open Meetings Act. A quorum of the committee is present. And the meeting is now declared open. It is four, fourteen oh five, that's two oh five PM. The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Are there any amendments or objections to the proposed meetings as approved, presented? None. Hearing none, the minutes as presented on the agenda are just then approved. Our next item on the agenda is an update on restrictive housing, which will be presented by TDC's chief programs officer, Mr. Jason Clark. Mr. Clark, congratulations on the new title. Will you please join us at the podium? If you're ready, please proceed.
Always difficult to follow Dr. L. Oh, my goodness. But Ambassador Siv, Chairman members, Mr. Collier, thank you for allowing me to share with you some exciting news in the realm of restrictive housing within TDCJ. So, really kind of the first question that many people ask is, what is restrictive housing? The American Correctional Association defines restrictive housing as confining someone to their cell by themselves at least twenty-two hours a day. When you look within TDCJ, you'll really find about three pockets that fit that title. Pre-hearing detention, so someone's committed a disciplinary offense and they need to be separated. Inmate protection investigation, so we need to separate that person as we do an investigation. But what I'm gonna be talking about today is security detention. Security detention is a designation which is for our most problematic inmates. These are individuals, again, who are spending at least twenty-two hours a day in their cell. When they come out, they're handcuffed and they are escorted by two correctional officers. They would typically come out for visitation, recreation, medical visits or programming. And there's really kind of four categories in which you would end up in restrictive housing. First is you're a danger to staff and inmates and your actions have demonstrated that. These tend to be very assaultive individuals. The second is your current escape risk. This means that you have a history of escaping or you've attempted to do so and we're concerned that you might do it again. The third is you're a member of an organized prison gang that has shown a propensity to be disruptive and organized within TDCJ and within our prison walls. And then finally, you're a threat to the institution itself. An example of this would be you're a hostage taker or you're someone that defeats, hand-restraints or opens doors. And in two thousand and three, Mr. Collier asked that I lead a work group to do a deep dive into our policies and practices. He, yeah, twenty twenty-three. He didn't really have necessarily something that he was looking to fix. He just asked, look at it and see that it, is it operating as it should and are there opportunities to improve it? And so, we developed a work group and it was of various divisions and departments. So, Office of General Counsel, Wyndham School District, Rehabilitation, Reentry, Fusion Center, CID, Executive Services, Research and Development. So, really, a cross-section of individuals came together. And we'll talk a little bit in a minute about what we identified. But first, I'd like to give you a little bit of history about restrictive housing in Texas. So, in nineteen eighty-four, in nineteen eighty-five, the Texas Department of Corrections, as it was known at that time, had a, a large number of inmate homicides. As you can see on the screen, twenty-six in eighty-four and twenty-seven in eighty-five. TDC at the time was under court oversight. And for years, the agency had utilized inmates in a supervisory function as building tenders. And the court identified that and rightly so, they stopped it. What happened, though, was prison gangs filled the void. And as those prison gangs filled the void, violence increased. So, at the time, the decision was made to expand the use of single-selling of inmates. Fast forward to two thousand and four, we hit a high-water mark of ten thousand inmates that were confined to cells by themselves. The terminology at the time, and it's changed over the years, but the terminology at the time was administrative segregation. We started using the term restrictive housing about five years ago and that's when the American Correctional Association started using that terminology. But it's around two thousand and four so that this topic really became front and center across the country as some organization advocacy, advocacy groups, but also some incorrections began to express concerns about its overuse. So, TDCJ and other correctional systems began to look for ways to reduce the number of individuals, but do so in a responsible, safe manner. And as you can see, we'll move to the next slide, we really made some significant progress. Under the leadership of Mr. Livingston, but then Mr. Collier, the number of individuals in restrictive housing has decreased by sixty-six percent since two thousand and ten. So, a significant amount. And even as our population has grown in two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four, we've continued to see a reduction in the number of people that are in restrictive housing. Today, the number is two thousand eight hundred and eight. That's the lowest we've ever had in modern history and we're very proud of that. So, how did we get there? Well, we introduced pathways out for individuals and we did that through effective programming. And I want to talk just briefly about some of these effective programs because it matters as we talk about what the work group identified. Dr. L actually mentioned this just a minute ago, grad, which is Gang Renouncement and Disassociation Program. That's a program that's designed for someone that's part of that prison gang to raise their hand and say, I want to get out of that gang. And by doing so, they would go through a program and then eventually they would be released back into general population. And we've had about seven thousand individuals go through that program and it's been very successful. And we've actually expanded it over the years to actually get people that are coming back in who are prison gang members to start immediately into that program. Another area that's really ramped up under Mr. Collier's leadership is cognitive treatment for those just chronic rule violators. Collier's leadership is cognitive treatment for those just chronic rule violators. And so we have Cognitive Intervention Transition Program, and that's really designed for individuals who are transitioning from segregation back into population. And what we know from research is that those individuals who have an extended amount of time in restrictive housing need a transitional period as they're moving back in. The last two programs I'm going to mention are for individuals who are leaving restrictive housing but going straight to the streets. We have taken a stance within TDCJ that we are not going to release directly from segregation to the streets. We are going to put you through programming before you leave. And so two programs I want to highlight, Cognitive Intervention Pre-Release and Serious and Violent Offender Reentry Initiative, also known as SEVORI. And both of these utilize in-cell programming, that eventually, they transition to group programming, and it's been very effective. One of the neat things is we've had more than 20 people who went through the SEVORI program this year call back in to say how they're doing and to say how much they appreciated going through the program. And mind you, these are individuals that we identified as being seriously ill or seriously violent. So we know we have effective programs. That's how we got to the lowest number that we've ever been to. And we've made good progress, but we know more work needs to be done. Next slide. Just a snapshot here, and as I mentioned before, 2,808 individuals in restrictive housing. Any given year, we move about 1,000 individuals in and out of restrictive housing. Most are male, and they will typically spend about three and a half years in restrictive housing. Placement happens at a unit level. However, each placement is reviewed at a state level. Despite these safeguards, the work group believed that there should be some additional improvements on how someone is placed, how they're reviewed, and then opportunities for programming. And so the work group had 13 different recommendations, and I want to highlight just a few of those for you. The first area we examined was really the governing plan itself, the restrictive housing plan. And we made numerous improvements throughout that plan to include the criteria for placement, and that was completed in September. We also enhanced the forms and the codes. That way, we could analyze and do data dumps and more effectively track who is going in there. The work group also recommended that we revise portions of our gang policy. So there are gangs that are automatically segregated, and the agency looks at those gangs to determine if they continue to be a threat to the agency and to the free world. And what we identified is we weren't reviewing those on a good cadence, nor were we looking at the full data. And so we made some improvements there to that plan in August. We also wanted to look for ways for inactive gang members to find their way out of segregation. So you have individuals who potentially are part of that prison gang, but for years have chosen not to be active in their prison gang. And there's a number of different reasons on why that would happen, but there are some individuals that will choose not to go through renouncement program. Could fear retribution, they could have more time that they have to do in the federal system, and so they're going to wait it out. And so besides GRAD, there's really no other way to get out of segregation other than GRAD. And so what the work group determined was, let's look at those inactive gang members that we have in our system. If we can corroborate it with evidence that they have been inactive for at least two years, then potentially, that person could be labeled an inactive gang member, go through a six-month cognitive program, and end up back into general population. And so we will be rolling that out in 2025 as an option. Another area that we reviewed was how someone is reviewed for release at that state level. Those restrictive housing committees at a state level just had CID members, and they looked at it from a security standpoint, as they should. But the work group determined that we really need to have some more voices on those committees. And so we moved, we have moved to a multidisciplinary team. So that includes individuals from health services, that includes individuals from reentry and rehabilitation to sit in on that committee, and they have equal say as far as when that person is released. And then finally, we reviewed and revisited our programs to see, could they be expanded? And could we develop some new ones? I'd like to thank Wyndham School District, I'm not sure if Christina's here. Ms. Hartman and her group were a part of our work group. And when we started looking at education for those that are in restrictive housing, recognized that we could do more. And they straight away raised their hand and said, we want to be a part of this, and they immediately got to work. So Ms. Hartman and her team during the 22, or I'm sorry, 23 and 24 school year began to expand those services, and they did so at units where we had a significant restrictive housing population. So more than 120 men have been able to participate in classes that otherwise would not have been able to participate. One of the challenging situations is teaching in a group setting for these individuals. Wyndham developed a new chair, program chair, and Ambassador Siv, I think you and I actually saw that in our tour at the Luther unit. And so this chair will allow for a group-type setting, so they can conduct classes, which we think is going to be more effective. And those chairs are going to start rolling out very soon to different units. And finally, another way that they are able to expand services is utilizing the inmate tablets and an interactive program there. And so they're able to provide curriculum utilizing this new application, so they're now getting science and mathematics and other civics curriculum. So pretty exciting there. Next slide. Something that's really powerful is fellow inmates. And the work group identified that. So if you've, I know all of you have spent time out on units, and when you see those field ministers and those life coaches, man, they are really powerful individuals, and they can make an impact. And so I asked Mr. Carter, could we expand that back into restrictive housing more so than what we have today? And he said, absolutely. And he got to work. Many of those individuals who are field minister and life coaches were actually in restrictive housing when you asked them. And so they bring a unique perspective, that lived experience, and can really talk to these men. So the picture on the left is actually a field minister who is tearwalking. So they go cell to cell, and they listen, and they minister where they can. And wardens have really embraced this program and its benefits. Another initiative right there in the middle is music therapy. The lady that is playing the guitar is a talented songwriter. And the two gentlemen to the left are life coaches in the purple vest. And the guy that's taking the picture is C.F. Hazelwood. And many of y'all know C.F. It's not unique to see him late at night with these volunteers singing and praising there, and it's just awesome to see. And then finally, to the right, you can see field ministers who are working with inmates on a spiritual transformation. And so that was a baptism there at the Wainwright unit. And so really excited to be able to expand those peer-led programs in restrictive housing. Next slide. So as I wrap up, I want to highlight a new program that we identified as a result of the work group. As we began to look at restrictive housing, we saw a pocket of inmates who had actually been approved to be released but did not want to move. So this was really puzzling to me because after you had spent some time in segregation, we've allowed for you to move out, but you don't want to go. And so asking wardens and asking others, what's behind that? And oftentimes, these are just really hard-to-reach individuals. They're anxious, and they become accustomed to their surroundings. And so kudos to Mr. Carter and Ruby Davis. So they took this on and developed a four-month program aimed specifically at this subset. And the first class actually began in January of this year, and it was comprised of 10 men. And I'm going to introduce you to two of them, Jose Laura and Domingo Rangal. I met both of these men shortly after they arrived at the Estelle unit, and to say that they were apprehensive was probably an understatement. And I wondered if they would make it. They had spent collectively between them 26 years in segregation. And so I was really happy to come back a few months later and see the progress that they had made.
And in this, the life skills class, if these tools would have been, if I would have had access to this before I left last time, there's no way I'd be in prison right now. No, there's absolutely no way at all. Being in these classes right here, it taught you to change the way you think. When you change the way you think, your behavior changes with it. Doing all this, doing all the bad you can think of, that breaking these rules, it takes a lot for you to plot a scheme to do that. Okay? It don't take nothing to do it the right way, to walk that straight line. Somebody gave me this chance, and I guarantee you, it's probably the best chance I've ever had since I've been locked up. The best chance I've ever had. Because I'm taking something with me from this that nobody can take. Nobody can take this from me.
I went through that program, and it did help me. It did help me, and it got me here, so I appreciate that, yes. I'm at that point where I was ready to take advantage of an opportunity. Because, you know, when you're young, you get a lot of opportunities, a lot. I had my share, I can't complain, but I didn't take advantage of it. Now, as an older person, you don't get them opportunities. This one came along, and I'm not, I'm not going to mess it up. I'm not going to mess it up.
And they have it. So both men are in general population, and they're doing good. I checked on them earlier this week. So really good to be able to see those, and that's just a couple of the success stories. So we have finished up a second class, and then starting in January, we'll have a third class of these men. So I'm incredibly excited to be in the role of chief programs officer. I really look forward to all the great things that we can accomplish within the agency. And just thank you for allowing me to update you on the progress that we've made in this really kind of challenging area. I'll pause for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. I, when I saw that picture of the chair, reminds me to thank you again for the excellent presentation you made to the French diplomats.
Yes, sir.
And I've been told that because of that presentation, you are now, you have been waived a visa requirement to go to France.
Sorry, can I get some time off?
You don't need a visa to go to France, and you can go as long as you want. But I want to make a point about the faith-based ministry that Mr. Carter has so well started. Every time I visit a unit, I always ask to see the field ministers, the peer educators, the life coaches. And about 10 days ago, I took a group of Rotarians from San Antonio to visit Dominguez, which is in my hometown, and they were so impressed by the interaction that we have had with the faith-based inmates. And we also visit the Faith-Based Dorm, which is quite big, you know, like 54, 55 people in there. But I encourage you to continue something that Mr. Carter has built, and build on and build up. And thank you again for the presentation. Is there any other question, general? Do you have five questions?
Yeah, just one question about the chair. The purpose of this special chair, what is it, for restraints, to allow them to be restrained?
Yes, sir. So when you come out of a cell, again, you're required that we have restraints. And so what the chair will allow is for that individual to be in a group setting but still be restrained, and it be safe for the teacher and for other students.
The photo doesn't give justice to the chair. I think you should go to Luther and try to sit and see if you can move anything. I mean, it's amazing. I tried it on, and it's quite impressive. Pastor.
Yes, related to the field minister and life coach programs that have been so successful, and understandably, I'm a huge advocate of those as well, and just grateful for those programs. Are there any naysayers toward programs like that that would liken them to, and again, I'm unfamiliar with the tender situation back in the 80s, but that would liken them to that sort of thing? And how do you address that?
Yep. So I certainly don't go as far back as Mr. Collier, but the building tenders had essentially access to walk wherever they wanted. And that access led to people turning a blind eye. And so knowing that history, as we started the field ministers, who were going to have some access, certainly not keys or anything like that, but would have more access to a unit than for a normal inmate, there was some hesitation, I'll just tell you. But as that started to roll out, and you go to the seminary and you see the quality of men that we're getting, and the ministers that are out there, very quickly, I think those concerns went away. And even just your hard-nosed warden out there has embraced it. And that tells me that the program's working, and working as it should. Now, any program, you're going to have one or two issues that have popped up, but I would say overall, this one's been incredibly successful.
Agreed. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Collier.
If I may, I have a question about the upcoming inactive gang members program.
Sure.
Even if a gang member is inactive, there's a risk that I could see of them being in danger reentering general population.
Yep.
Will you speak a little bit to that and what we're thinking and seeing there?
Absolutely. So we have security threat group officers on the unit, but we also have it centralized here in Huntsville as well. And so as we review those individuals who would be inactive gang members, we're going to do a deep dive to see, do they have any enemies on that unit? To make sure if we're going to place them, they could be in a safe area. But also making sure that they're placed at the right unit. Something that we have to be cognizant of is to make sure that they don't become active again, and they start recruiting. And if that happens, then they'll go back into restrictive housing very quickly. But again, I think that is just making sure that we have sufficient oversight for that.
I'm excited to see how it goes.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Any other questions?
That was mine concerning.
Oh, that's your question, okay. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Clark.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
There being no further business, the Texas Board of Criminal Justice Correctional Institutions Committee is now adjourned.
The meeting of the Texas Board of Criminal Justice Human Resources Committee is called to order in accordance with chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, the Open Meetings Act. A quorum of the committee is present, and the meeting is now declared open. It is 2:29 PM. Our first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Are there any amendments or objections to the proposed minutes as presented? Hearing none, the minutes as presented on the agenda will stand approved. Next, we'll hear from Mary McCafferty, Director of the Human Resources Division, who will be providing an overview of Personal Directive 21 and 22. Ms. McCafferty is already here, so when you're ready, you can begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Ms. Seiger, Chairman, members of the board, and Mr. Collier. I'm excited to be here today to review with you our updated Personnel Directive 22, which involves employee conduct and disciplinary actions, and tell you about our new policy, PD-21, which is anti-discrimination in the workplace. So PD-22 has been a longstanding policy in the agency that we have had the goal to enhance and improve over the years, so we're excited to finally deliver that. And 21 is actually a consolidation of three different policies to provide clarity and definitions for EEO issues and protected classes, and really outline prohibited behavior for the agency. So for PD-22, our vision with the policy changes are to really focus on behavior change and less on punishment. We wanted to provide tools to supervisors for them to provide concrete feedback to employees that relates to their job performance, as well as actionable steps for improvement. And we really wanted to emphasize coaching and mentoring opportunities and conversations and connection between employee and supervisor to be more productive. PD-21 provides more clarity on what is required to be reported and when. It streamlines the process for us in human resources on the backend and allows us to better prioritize complaints and direct our limited resources to where they're most needed. So within PD-22, we've updated the terminology to be less punitive, less courtroom language, and more about conversations and conduct-focused. So we will be educating staff about these new terminology changes. And the new progressive corrective actions that have been added to PD-22 are really employee-focused and giving you the tools that you need to improve your conduct or behavior. The first being verbal guidance, which is informal and would happen on a regular basis at day-to-day conversation between supervisor and employee. Counseling is our first documented action. It's a formal approach to address specific problems. It's a formal approach to address specific problems and for supervisors to provide that personalized guidance. We've also added an Employee Development Plan, which is a formal approach to provide measurable specific goals that are actionable and also provide the resources that might be necessary for that employee to improve their performance, maybe toolkits, training, all of those different things to help them improve. And we would, we'll be reassessing with that employee 30, 60, and 90 days post that Employee Development Plan. We're really pushing in the new policy for supervisors to use these corrective actions when, the progressive corrective actions, excuse me, when appropriate so that we can focus on that behavior change. For PD-21, this policy really addresses the inappropriate behavior and misconduct. It's employee-focused as well and adds additional support mechanisms for somebody who might be subject to that inappropriate behavior. We wanted to highlight how important supervisors are in creating an inclusive workplace and set up a clear process for handling those complaints. We've added a supervisor check-in for the employee who's reporting misconduct to be able to speak with their supervisor about their concerns. And then the supervisor would have the option to employ an interim remedial action. So they'll, in discussion with intake and their department head or warden, determine and make recommendations whether we need to separate the complainant and the respondent or how we can best address the needs of that employee. And we also have really outlined the supervisor's obligation to report. And then the training will be teaching them how to have that conversation to explain to the employee, "I'm glad that you came, thank you for telling me this. I do have an obligation to report. That's something that we can do together or you can do on your own, but I want you to know that I'm gonna follow up as well." So in the event we proceed through the progressive corrective action or we have conduct that is at a higher level of severity, we have a number of disciplinary actions within PD-22. Today, we tend to overuse probation as a punishment and we don't see the behavior change that we're looking for. So we have changed the way probation works in the new PD-22. It will now be a standalone action. So in the old policy, you had to give probation with everything. So now it can be used on its own. We've made violating probation more severe. If you are on probation and you go on to commit a secondary or subsequent offense, the punishment will be more severe. And we are providing new tools which will decrease the use of probation. So while today, as we reported to Sunset, we have almost half of our staff that have had a disciplinary action, most of which came with a probation sanction, we should see those numbers decrease with the use of the new progressive tools. Another change is to the demotion disciplinary action. It will no longer be temporary and an employee would have to requalify or apply to get a promotion. The demotions for career ladders are a little more nuanced, so we'll be really working on that in the training for supervisors. All right. So with the violations and PD-22, we've added a Code of Conduct and Performance Standards, which were developed based on our current ethical code of conduct and the TDCJ core values. We've reworded the violations to be much clearer, merged them where possible, and added a couple of new ones. One new one is the attendance violation, which will allow us to address both absenteeism, unexcused absenteeism, as well as tardiness. And we've added an unsustainable performance violation, which will be used when an employee's conduct has a significant impact to our operations, causes a financial impact, or keeps us from reaching our critical goals and functions. For PD-21, we've added levels of severity for harassment, sexual harassment and retaliation. Those levels would be like a lower-level, minor, one-time offense, hostile or criminal behavior. We've also added a failure to accommodate and an equal pay and compensation discrimination A big change for us in the EEO policy is adding timelines that guide our responsibilities as an agency for investigating and responding to potential misconduct. We developed this timeline from looking at our own statistical data as well as other agency policy examples in federal and state law. The PD-22 timelines have remained the same. To simplify the resolution process, we have conduct officials that review potential misconduct for PD-22 and EEO-designated agency officials for potential EEO violations. The DAOs are appointed by Mr. Collier and trained by HR, which we're working to enhance and improve our training. But we've simplified that resolution process for EEO so that that designated agency official can handle any EEO and PD-22 violation, where in the past, if they discovered both, we would run two parallel processes, which doesn't make a lot of sense efficiency-wise. So an additional change is the active periods, which is how long we will consider an offense, a previous offense, when determining a sanction for a subsequent offense. So an active period could be one year, two years, or life, depending on the severity. Again, those violations, when you're on probation, become more severe, meaning that the conduct reviewer can move towards dismissal if you commit a subsequent offense while on probation. And we've also strengthened the rehire review process for employees who return, who may have left the agency under potential disciplinary action or on probation. So with these new, with the new policy of 21 and the changes to 22, we have a significant implementation project on our hands. We are working to develop a robust training that will educate all employees agency-wide about the new terms, what it looks like, what they can expect, and what our expectations are for their behavior and conduct. And then we are also focusing on the 6,000 supervisors throughout the agency to provide them with in-depth, hands-on training to help them build the skills they'll need to implement the policy. In addition, there are other policy changes or addendums that will be coming. Just to highlight a few of those, PD-24 is our administrative separation policy. We are adding a six-month probationary period for new employees. This will really help supervisors, instead of having to discipline a new employee out, will have the option to be really clear, set clear expectations for a new employee. And if they're just not cutting it, despite our best efforts, we'll be able to separate them early on. We're also adjusting PD-72 to redefine probation as that standalone sanction. PD-79, which will set equal standards for all employees who are on probation regarding transfers and reassignments. And we'll be tightening our leaves policy, PD-49, to help us address when people abandon their posts or their job. So if you fail to come to work and you don't communicate with us today, we're gonna bury you with disciplinary paper and do a number of hearings before we separate you. Revising PD-49 will allow us to instead spend our time and resources on better things and separate you when you fail to communicate with us, you know, we're not gonna keep you on the books.
You're saying 49, not 79?
49, yes, ma'am. So I want to say a big thank you to our HR policy team. Tiffany, Alana, and Therese were the lead folks on this project and it has been a long time coming and they made it happen in a very short period of time. So I'm very proud of them. They were extremely collaborative, both within our HR division as well as with our stakeholders throughout the agency. And so just really want to highlight their efforts and thank them. So with that, I'll pause for any questions.
Chairman.
There's so much in here to unpack. And first of all, thanks to you, Ms. McCafferty, and your group for, for the work that you're doing in this area. And we all know that, that good employee relations begin from the standards and the systems that are set from the top. And so I really appreciate all the work that you're doing to recognize that and to make sure that these get rolled out in the way that you described through effective training. So on that training piece, I was looking at some of your graphics and I noticed that on your graphics, you've got people interacting with people in person.
Yes, sir.
I don't see any computer screens in there. So, so can you just talk to us a little bit about how we're doing on getting people back to the workplace and how in your view, that contributes to the kind of effective, positive workplace relations that we're trying to accomplish?
Sure. And one of the options under the counseling and the Employee Development Plan is to suspend tell-the-work either temporarily or permanently to help provide more face-to-face interactions and conversation and guidance with the supervisor. So that is a new addition to the policy as well that can be used in those situations. I think the training is really going to emphasize that we're people-first. We're really trying to make policies people-first and our approach at HR to be people-centered. And so having those conversations, but teaching them how to do that is going to be very important.
And that was what I appreciated out of your comments, too. It's not all about, because sometimes when you talk about HR policies, some people perceive it, when you're talking about all these disciplinary steps and everything else, that it's all about the person being supervised, but it's also very much about the supervisor.
Absolutely.
And, and so, so can you just tell us a little bit more about kind of the training that you're gonna make available to supervisors to make sure that they're effectively doing the type of mentoring before we even get to those levels of discipline?
Right, yes, sir. So we are in the process of identifying some kind of super trainers or master trainers that have experience with the disciplinary process, who have been supervisors and been responsible as both an employee and a supervisor for maintaining conduct standards. They're going to go out and facilitate the training agency-wide with all of the supervisors so that they can answer questions, they can provide real-world examples and scenarios so that it's not just HR coming in and talking a big policy game. We really want it to be meaningful. And through the work that Mr. Mendoza is doing to develop a coaching and mentor program throughout the agency, we plan to infuse that. In fact, he's taking the lead on the training initiative to help us start with PD-22 and 21 training, but continue that through all of our supervisory trainings.
And, and is the goal not only to promote effective supervisor-employee interactions, but also to actually contribute to the professional development of supervisors?
Absolutely, yes, sir. Absolutely.
Okay. And then, and then just one other, just consistent with my questions, when we're talking about these levels of discipline that you're talking about, starting, you said one through five with probation, I mean, obviously, you're outlining the changes in policy, but before we even get to any of those steps, is the training gonna involve ways of avoiding even having to get to steps one through five?
Yes, absolutely. Like how to do that Employee Development Plan, what specific actionable goals we want to set with an employee? Because I think a lot of times today, we just slap probation on, but we don't ever explain how we expect them to correct their behavior.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Walt?
Am I, I have a question, a kind of a concern. The concept of probation is terminology that we're very, very familiar with, it deals with the inmate population and as they move on.
Yes, sir.
We're talking about employees and when you roll them into probation, I mean, that sounds so harsh. And I'm wondering, did you go through other terminology like administrative review or some other concept that might not come across? I'd hate to be put in probation if I were a CEO.
Yes, I think that is probably the one holdover that we have from criminal justice terminology that's still in PD-22. And looking at other agencies and best practices that just keep using that term. So definitely could keep exploring other options, but I hear you.
You may want to get some feedback, but anyway, from, from employees, because again, if I were an employee in a situation where I'm not being terminated, I'm being corrected, I would really find it difficult to...
And it may be an opportunity to kind of be people-first because we are in a correction space, to say, "Let's just be a little cognizant of that." And even if it is something that other large corporations are using as the term, it could be something that we're just taking people into consideration. I don't know, suspension, something, that kind of thing.
Yeah, you're kind of putting you on notice.
Yes.
That we need to see improvement.
I just said, oh, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say thank you to Mary and her team, because this project's actually, PD-22, we started working on about two years ago with work groups with several divisions represented. So it's been a collaborative effort with a lot of divisions involved. So thank you for bringing it across the finish line and then PD-21 had to come quickly. These also match up with our Sunset recommendations. But also to give you a realistic timeframe to you as the board, just knowing that probably as we roll from today, you're looking at about April probably for a full implementation because the training will occur over that first quarter as we get into 2025. We're working on that training now. As she mentioned, Mr. Mendoza leading from HR and Mary and her team, but then TLDD's involved, Mr. Lumpkin's involved, and Mr. Clark trying to put the teams together to do that. But then we'll be hitting the ground with several variations of training depending on the level of involvement so staff understand, but also the supervisors, the supervisors are the more complicated piece because we can talk about coaching all day, but we've gotta teach how to coach and coach how to coach, so to speak. But we'll work through that. But just thank you for all y'all's work on this.
Thank you.
I add my voice to thank you also for the presentation. I'm interested in the process of this investigation and review. Are they the same people who investigate, different from those that are reviewing, or how are the two teams connected?
Yes, sir. So there will be different parties providing a new lens, a review during each step of the process. So the person who does the investigation, old term, new term, conduct review will be different than the ultimate decision-maker, the conduct official, who reviews all of the information, has the discussion with the employee, and then makes a decision about what action to take.
And normally, how many investigators do we have and how many reviewers do we have in each team?
So any supervisor could potentially serve as the investigator or the conduct official, depending on the circumstances, who's involved, what happened. That could be a frontline supervisor and then a manager. It could be a manager and then a deputy director. It just depends on the situation.
Always there's more than one person?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
For PD-21 violations, Ambassador, so if it's an EEO-related type complaint, then we have EEO investigators in human resources who do those investigations. So it'd be reported by the employee and/or supervisor, we both have to report. Then they go through an intake process, then the investigators would do the investigation. It ultimately would then be handed to an independent group who does the review of that conduct, that we, I pick those individuals.
Yes.
And then my final question is about the counseling piece of PD-22. Is this a one-time written notice or will you expand on that?
Sure. So depending on what kind of behavior we're trying to correct, I think almost always it would be an ongoing conversation. It can't be a one-time deal and it needs to be frequent and concrete. So we need to give feedback about how you're improving and that is really step one. So we could do a number of counseling sessions and then move to an Employee Development Plan where we have very specific metrics that we will need to see in order to continue.
Good. So just for clarification, an employee could have multiple counseling sessions before they're ever put in an improvement plan of any kind? And as long as we're seeing improvements there, as given with our concrete metrics, they're on the right path?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Mary. Thank you so much, Mary, for this. This has been a long time coming, and I know a lot of work has gone into this, so I really appreciate it, and thank you to your whole team. If there's no further questions, the meeting of the Texas Board of Criminal Justice Human Resources Committee is now adjourned. It is 2:52 PM.
The 238th meeting of the Texas Board of Criminal Justice is called to order in accordance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, the Open Meetings Act. During this meeting, the Board will be conducting business from the agenda posted in the Texas Register. Members of the Board present for this meeting include myself, Eric Nichols, Vice Chair Faith Johnson, Secretary Dr. Rodney Burrow, Judge Molly Francis, Ambassador Sishan Shiv, Pastor Nate Sprinkle, General Bill Welch, Sidney Zeiger, and Tom Fordice. A quorum of the Board is present, and the meeting is now declared open. This meeting is being conducted in person and is also being broadcast on the Texas Department of Criminal Justice YouTube channel. It is 2:53 PM. The Board will now go into recess to conduct an executive session, which will be closed to the public in accordance with the Texas Government Code, Section 551.074. Executive session will be conducted at the Hartz Veterans Museum. This Board will reconvene tomorrow, Friday, December 13th, here in the same room at 9:15 AM, following the meeting of the Board of Trustees for the Wyndham School District. It is 2:53 PM. Thank you.